All right, Bob, we're good to go.
Welcome to today's zoning Board of Appeals meeting. This is Bob Hessler, the chairman. Before we begin, I would like to read a note. This meeting is being recorded and will be available shortly here after for scheduled and on-demand viewing on any smartphone or tablet device. If anybody's recording this meeting, let us know. In the meantime, we are using this format because the governor told us we had to by limiting the number of people that can gather on one place. So we're not having any in-person attendance meetings where the public will be permitted and every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings as provided in the governor's order. A reminder that persons who would like to listen to this meeting while in progress may do so by calling the phone number 508-945-4410 and the conference ID is 366-567-149 pound. And if you turn on channel 18, all this information is there. Despite our best efforts, we may not be able to provide for real-time access and we will post a recording of this meeting on the town's website as soon as possible. The procedural steps, as soon as I'm finished, I'm going to call the role for all board members. I'm going to ask anybody that's not a board member participating in the call for their name and the last four digits of their phone number for identification purposes. The hearing notice is read by staff. You or your representative present the appeal or the application. Anyone in favor of the appeal will be asked to speak. Chairman will then read all the letters. Anybody against the proposal will then get to speak. The applicant may rebut testimony. The board members will then ask questions. Once we are satisfied, we will close the hearing, we'll deliberate, and then we will take a vote by roll call. So that being said, I will now ask for a roll call of all members, starting with Mr. Nixon.
I'm right here.
Buck.
This is Buck, present.
Dennis Sullivan.
Dennis Sullivan, present.
David Thompson.
I have to look, he's on there.
I can see David, so I know he's there.
I'm here. Hi there.
Happy Van Sickle. Paul Sample.
Paul Sample, present.
David Beach.
David Beach, present.
We're all present. Account for it. Sarah Clark is also in attendance and so is
Chantel.
The rest of the staff.
We also have Chantel Kilkenny and Kathleen Donovan, our Director of Community Development, present with us today.
So Sarah, why don't you read the first petition, the first four or five, we're going to continue or withdraw. So why don't we start with Mrs. Roberts and the email from Ben Zender.
Okay, so application number 20-017, Caroline C. Roberts, care of Benjamin Zender Esquire, PO Box 2300, Orleans, Mass. 02653. Owner of property located at 35 Steelwater Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 9J Block 33, Lot SW 11. The applicant proposes to construct a detached garage with a second floor accessory dwelling unit, ADU, on a non-conforming lot which requires the grant of a special permit. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 36,934 square feet, or 60,000 square feet is required in the R60 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 9, and Section 8D 2B of the protective bylaw. This was continued from April 23, 2020. So Bob, would you like to read the email from Ben, or would you just like me to summarize?
Yes, I have an, I have an email from Mr. Zender, who is the attorney representing Mrs. Roberts, and he said, Dear Sarah, would you please present to the Board of Appeals this request that Carrie Roberts' petition be withdrawn without prejudice? That being said, any discussion from the board as to whether we want to proceed and allow him to withdraw this without prejudice? If not, let me, yeah.
Hello, Phyllis Leader?
Mr. Nixon.
Yes. I'd be most interested since it was based, the continuance, the last time was based on the building commissioner ruling. I would be most interested in hearing the letter or memo or whatever it is that the building commissioner wrote.
Sarah, do you have a copy of that? I do not.
So the building commissioner was in the process of drafting the letter. And the crux of the letter was that the applicant did not qualify as a year-round resident and therefore would not be able to proceed as an accessory dwelling unit. We did receive the email from Attorney Zender prior to the finalization of that letter, which is why it was not sent out to the board.
Will it eventually be put into the record, or is it die a death?
If, if we choose, or if the board chooses to withdraw the application, we can put the draft version of the letter into the file if, if the board would like. Otherwise, it would, the decision letter would just be a simple withdrawal of the application without prejudice.
Okay, well, from my perspective, I think that it's important that it be put into the file because after all, Mr. Zender's withdrawal is based on the commissioner ruling. And also, I think for future cases like this, it'd be very beneficial that the ruling be part of a previous file, meaning this one.
All right, I have made a note of that in my notebook. And with the board's agreeance, I will add that draft letter to the file for this application.
Thank you very much.
So Mr. Simple, would you make the motion that we grant the withdrawal and that the draft letter will be part of the file? I'd prefer you make the motion and identify yourself.
This, this is Paul Sample. I move to grant the request for withdrawal filed by Mr. Sender and to add to the file the draft letter with respect to residency.
Do we have a second?
Second. David Beach, second.
Voting, Mr. Nixon.
I'm in favor.
Identify yourself.
I'm sorry, Nixon here, yes.
Mr. Simple.
Paul Sample, yes.
David Beach.
David Beach, yes.
Happy Van Sickle. Dennis Sullivan. Oh, you're not voting.
Not voting.
All right, then, Bob Hessler, chairman, I vote, so that passes unanimously. So now we go to the continuances, and we have four of those.
Okay, so we will start with application number 20-022, Morris Island Nominee Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 46 Little Beach Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16A Block 27, Lot H44. The applicant seeks to enlarge extender change, a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling. Also proposes construction of a new driveway and installation of a fence as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3A and 4A 3D of the bylaw. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 15.2 feet from Seagull Road and 29.6 feet from Little Beach Road and within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 16.5 feet from Seagull Road and 5.5 feet from Little Beach Road where a 40-foot setback is required. It will remain within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 527 square feet and the proposed building coverage is 832 square feet, or 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required and contains 13,226 square feet where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Sarah, first, expediency, why don't you read all three and then Bill can make the motion to continue all three?
If we.
Why don't you shorten up the ad? You don't have to read the whole ad, Sarah.
Well, legally, I do, Bill. So Bob, we will do a separate roll call though on each of the applications, though?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay, application number 20-023, Morris Island Nominee Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 47 Little Beach Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16A Block 27, Lot H44. The applicant seeks to enlarge extender change, a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and construction of a new dwelling. Also proposes construction of a new driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3D of the bylaw. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 30.3 feet and 12.8 feet from Little Beach Road, negative 1.7 feet from the southwesterly butter and within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 7 feet and .1 feet from Little Beach Road where a 40-foot setback is required, .7 feet from the southwesterly butter where a 25-foot setback is required and will remain within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 695 square feet and the proposed building coverage is 1,152 square feet where 2,800 square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland where 20,000 square feet is required and contains 4,970 square feet or 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6 and 9, and Sections 5B and 8D 2B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. Finally.
Now we'll go to, now 53.
Yep. Application number 20-024, Morris Island Nominee Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, PO Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 53 Little Beach Road, also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, 16A Block 26, Lot H52. The applicant seeks to enlarge extender change, a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the demolition of the existing dwelling and the construction of a new dwelling. Also proposes the construction of a new driveway as allowed by special permit under Section 4A 3D of the bylaw. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 32.5 feet from Little Beach Road and within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located 29.6 feet from Little Beach Road where a 40-foot setback is required and will remain within the Coastal Conservancy District where a 50-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,412 square feet and the proposed building coverage is 1,806 square feet where 2,800 square feet where twenty-eight hundred square feet is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains zero square feet of buildable upland, or twenty thousand square feet is required, and contains twenty-eight thousand nine hundred square feet, or forty thousand square feet is required in the R-fourty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and nine, and Sections five B and eight D two B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Thank you. Sarah, before you, Mr. Riley makes the request to continue these, what's the continue date?
So he is looking to be continued to July ninth.
All right, and that works for you, right?
At this point, yes.
Okay, Mr. Riley, would you like to make the motion that we continue forty-six Little Beach Road to July ninth?
Yes, good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of the trust. The, the reason for the request is that the Conservation Commission is unable to hear the, the applications in its normal order, and has taken advantage of the Governor's proclamation to be able to spread out the hearings, rather than meet, have them on the days required under the statute. Because, you know, these matters, they might end up with different structures, or changes in the structures. We thought it was better to continue the matters until after our hearing date, which is now June tenth. And if I could just sort of ask a philosophical question. The, I have other matters that'd be coming up, that also have Conservation Commission involved. But the structures are outside the, the, they're in the jurisdiction, but they're not in a wetland. They're, and so, we're really talking about mitigation planting. And I'd like to know, when we're done with the motion here, what the zoning board thinks about, if we decide to move forward with the Z.B.A., even though the Conservation Commission has an act. But in any event, we move these three matters continued to July tenth.
Okay, I mean, from a philosophical point of view, as long as it's a mitigation issue, I have no problem with us going ahead of Conservation. If it's something extensive, like these three, then we would prefer to get a ruling from Conservation.
Right, and I understand.
If anybody else, if anybody else wants to add to that. But if, if there's anything that's pending, that's merely a mitigation and is not of significant impact on, I mean, you can't go forward anyway without them signing off on it, so it's kind of a moot case anyway.
So, Mr. Hessler, this is Sarah. The other applications that Mr. Riley has filed, they're currently scheduled with Conservation for August. And they're scheduled with us for July ninth. So, it would be an additional month, potentially, of him waiting to be heard by the Z.B.A., if we choose that we require a full comment from the Conservation Commission.
My feeling is, let's do it on July, July ninth. And if any of the other Board members want to weigh in, please identify yourself.
Yeah, fearless leader, Nixon here. I disagree. I think Conservation should hear these three first, going down and viewing them and seeing what's going on down there, particularly-
We're not talking about these three, we're talking about the other ones.
Oh, I thought, I thought Sarah, in the, okay. Sarah, when have these been held?
These are June tenth.
These ones are going to Conservation on June tenth. The other applications that Attorney Riley has filed with the zoning board are scheduled for August with the Conservation Commission.
Late August.
Late August, and all of those are located outside of the floodplain.
There, okay, then, I misunderstood. Fearless leader, I take back my comment.
So you agree with me?
Yes.
That's a first.
You owe me a buck.
Anybody else?
Not that kind of buck, a different kind of buck.
All right, so, that being said, Mr. Riley, that's fine with us. So would you make the motion that you request that we continue forty-six Little Beach to July ninth?
I, I requested the matters be continued to July ninth.
This is, this is Paul Simple. I'll move to grant the continuance to July ninth on application twenty dash oh-two-two.
David Beach, second.
All right, voting, Mr. Nixon?
Nixon votes yes.
Simple?
Simple votes yes.
Beach?
David Beach votes yes.
Happy? And Hessler votes yes. Now, Mr. Riley, make the motion to continue forty-seven Little Beach to July ninth.
I request the continuance of forty-seven Little Beach to July ninth.
This is Paul Simple. I'll move to grant the request to continue twenty dash oh-two-three to July ninth, two thousand twenty.
David Beach seconds.
Voting, Mr. Nixon?
Nixon votes yes.
Simple?
Simple votes yes.
Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Van Sickle? And Bob Hessler votes yes. And finally, the request for fifty-three Little Beach.
On behalf of the trust, I request that fifty-three Little Beach Road be continued to July ninth.
This is Paul Simple. I'll move to grant the request for continuance on twenty dash oh-two-four to July ninth, two thousand twenty.
Second, David Beach.
We need a vote, Mr. Nixon?
Nixon, yes.
Simple?
Simple, yes.
Beach?
Beach, yes.
Van Sickle? Hessler, yes. They're approved, so we'll do all three of those on July ninth. Also, on July ninth, we'll hear Mr. Riley's other petitions that will not require prior approval from the Conservation Commission. The next order of business is a continu-, a continuance on application twenty-fourteen, thirty-four Hallway Street. Sarah, I do not have the correspondence, so if you could read the petition and then read the correspondence, we can vote on it.
All right, I just have to pull up what I had sent to you guys yesterday from Mike's continuance. Give me one quick second. And, okay. I have it, so, application number twenty dash zero-one-four. Thirty-four Chatham Village Trust, care of Michael D. Ford Esquire, P.O. Box four-eight-five, West Harwich, Mass. zero-two-six-seven-one. Owner of property located at thirty-four Hallway Street. Also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, seventeen C., blocks thirty-seven, lot sixteen A. The applicant seeks to enlarge extender change, a non-conforming dwelling, and, non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot, via the demolition of the existing dwelling and garage and construction of a new dwelling. Also proposed is the construction of a new driveway and extension of an existing footpath, as allowed by special permit under Sections four A three A and four A three D of the bylaw. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located twenty-one point three feet from the road and within the Coastal Conservancy District. The proposed dwelling will be non-conforming in that it will be located twenty-one point three feet from the road, where a twenty-five-foot setback is required, and will remain within the Coastal Conservancy District where a fifty-foot setback is required. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains two thousand four hundred sixty square feet of buildable upland, where twenty thousand square feet is required. The lot contains thirty-nine thousand nine hundred fourteen square feet in an R-twenty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section six and nine, and Sections five B and eight D two B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw. This was continued from April twenty-third, two thousand twenty. And the email-
I, I found it.
All right.
I found it. This is an email from Mike Ford, attorney for the petitioner, dated yesterday, the twenty-seventh, that says, "Hi, Sarah, please accept this email. Email is a request of forty-three Chatham Village Trust to continue application twenty dash zero-fourteen for special permit at thirty-four Hallway Street. As reported to you by phone, the applicant has reached an agreement with neighbors regarding the project, and all parties need a short extension to finalize the agreements that have been reached. Accordingly, we would like to continue this hearing until the June eleventh meeting. Thank you for your continued cooperation and assistance in this matter, Mike Ford. Any discussion? If not, can we have a, a motion from Mr. Simple?
This is Paul Simple. I'll move to grant the continuance on application twenty dash oh-one-four to June eleventh, twenty, two thousand twenty.
David Beach, second.
Voting, Mr. Nixon?
Nixon, yes.
Simple?
Simple, yes.
Beach?
Beach, yes.
Van Sickle? And Hessler, yes, that passes unanimously. So now we can actually get down to business, Sarah.
Okay, application number twenty dash zero-one-eight. Thirty-eight Briggs Way Nominee Trust, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box seven oh-seven, Chatham, Mass. zero-two-six-three-three. Owner of property located at thirty-eight Briggs Way. Also shown on the Town of Chatham's assessor's map, seventeen D., block five, lot B one. The applicant seeks to modify special permit number seventeen dash zero-three-eight to allow for an alternate location of the elevated stairway over a coastal bank. The lot contains forty-three thousand five hundred fifty-eight square feet of buildable upland in the R-fourty zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-eight, Section fourteen, and Section eight D two B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of Thirty-eight Briggs Way Nominee Trust, the Unisys. And as you may recall, this property was subject to a special permit, seventeen dash zero-three-eight, which requested, among other things, permission to have an elevated staircase over the rock revetment that fronts the property. And that, that walkway was more or less centered in the middle of the property. The, that was supposed to lead to a dock, which, which was not allowed. And so the Unisys would like to, the stairway over, so it actually covers an existing set of steps that's built into the revetment. Because, because the revetments are sort of alive animals, they shift over time, and it's not a particularly safe access. So they'd like to just build a stair, build an elevated stairway, which would be built out of aluminum, over the existing steps that are built into the revetment itself. And I don't know, Sarah's got the plan up, yeah, so that's, that's what we're seeking, yes. And the, for whatever it's worth, the sideline setback for steps like this is three feet, and we're a little over three feet away from the sideline.
Thank you, Sarah. That's good, that's fine. Sarah, I don't think we have any, has anybody logged on to speak in favor of this petition? I don't think we have any correspondence. And I don't think anybody has logged on to speak against this proposal.
So Bob, we do have, we do have correspondence from the Conservation Commission with regards to this one?
Can you read it? I, it's buried here on my, buried here on my sofa.
This is a letter from the Conservation Agent, Callie Harper, dated May twenty-seven, two thousand twenty, in regards to Thirty-eight Briggs Way. "The commission approved Phase One of the amendment process and allowed this project to move forward as an amendment to the original order of conditions. The materials have not been submitted for Phase Two of the amendment process." And that's the extent of the correspondence.
Well, the, okay, so, for those of you who are not familiar with the Conservation Commission process, to the extent you'd call it a rational process, first you have to go ask the commission, "Can I file a request for an amendment?" And then they say, after studying it, they say, "Okay, yes, you can file a request for an amendment." Of course, we filed the plan when we filed the request. But now we have to file another letter saying, "Here's the plan for the requested amendment, and presumably, you know, I don't know if it's been submitted yet by the clock engineering, but if it hasn't, it'll be very shortly. And presumably, then, since they've voted to allow the request for the amendment, typically, they allow the amendment when we get the stuff filed."
Okay. So as I said, we have no indication that there's anybody logged on to speak in favor of this or against it, or has any questions, so questions from the Board. Mr. Nixon?
I have none.
Mr. Simple?
Paul Simple has none.
Mr. Beach?
I have no, David Beach has no questions.
Happy? And nor do I, Bob Hessler. So Mr. Simple, we need a motion.
How about the other three, Mr. fearless leader?
Oh, yes, how about them? Dennis?
Dennis Sullivan, no question.
Mr. Thompson? David?
No questions.
Mr. Upson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wonder if Bill could restate the fact that the revetment moves, the existing stairways are mounted on the revetment, they're going to install the new stairs on the old stairs, on the revetment, or independent of? I wasn't really sure what, where they were installing the new stairs, or how they were installing them.
All right, the, okay, so the existing stairs are not elevated. They, they organize the stones in the revetment to act as steps going down. So, the, they do tend to shift a little bit over time, and the, the, and they're not standard risers. So, you know, one step may be, you know, eight inches high, another step may be twelve inches high. And so, it's not an easy walkway for a family to use. So the idea is that they take an aluminum frame and attach it to some of the rocks. And the, even if there's a minor shift, it doesn't really change the orientation of the stairs, and it certainly doesn't change the rise and run of the staircase, which is really what the Unis family would like to protect at this time.
Thank you. Is that a stamped print by an engineer?
Well, it's, it's from David Clark, I assume it's stamped, I don't know. The one I have in my hand is stamped.
All right, that's good enough, thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you, Bob.
Any further questions on the Board? Mr. Simple, motion to close the-
This is, this is Paul Simple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Beach, seconds.
Mr. Nixon, the vote to approve or disapprove?
Of the, we are voting to go into deliberation.
Deliberation, correct.
Nixon votes yes.
Simple?
Simple votes yes.
Beach?
Beach votes yes.
Happy? And Hessler votes yes. Deliberations, Mr. Nixon?
I do believe this will make for a much safer passage for this family to get down to the water. As Attorney Riley has pointed out, the rocks do shift, and typically, those steps are not designed for ordinary humans, maybe animals of the sort, but giving them a modern set of stairs that's anchored to the rock revetment makes a lot of sense. So I believe we should vote yes.
Mr. Simple?
I agree with Mr. Nixon's comments.
Mr. Beach?
Yes, I, very well said, I agree.
Mr. Happy, Van Sickle? Mr. Sullivan?
Dennis Sullivan, yes, I-
Dennis Sullivan, yes, I would vote, if I were voting, I'd vote in favor of according to you, Dave Nixon.
Mr. David. Mr. Thompson.
I agree wholeheartedly with what Mr. Nixon said.
And Mr. Upson.
I'll go along with the rest of the people.
And I, Bob Hessler, agree. So we will now vote to approve or disapprove the petition. Mr. Nixon, oh, actually, we, can you read the petition again, or the, the vote again, Mr. Semple?
Well, I will, I will move to grant the?
You have to make it first.
I'll move to grant the petition as requested.
David Veatch second.
All those in favor, starting with Mr. Nixon.
Nixon votes yes.
Mr. Semple.
Semple votes yes.
Veatch.
Veatch votes yes.
Happy Van Sickel. And so do I, Bob Hessler. That's unanimous approval. There are no dissenting votes. Thank you, Mr. Riley.
Thank you.
All right. Application number 20-019, John and Pamela Cummings, care of William F. Riley Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 59 Harding's Lane, also shown on the Town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 14C, Block 31, Lot 22. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via demolition of the existing dwelling and shed, and the construction of a new dwelling. The existing dwelling is non-conforming, and that it is located 24.8 feet from the northerly butter, where a 25-foot setback is required. The proposed dwelling will comply with all bulk and dimensional requirements of the bylaw, but is considered as a substantial alteration, and under the Second Except Clause of Section 6 of Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, such substantial alteration requires the grant of a special permit. The existing building coverage is 2,936 square feet, 9.7%, and the proposed building coverage is 3,024 square feet, 9.98% or 10% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming, and that it contains 30,300 square feet, where 40,000 square feet is required in the R40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 40A, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Riley.
Good afternoon, Bill Riley, on behalf of John and Pamela Cummings. Karen Kempton is on the line as well. The, so if you bet to the property, you can understand why the Cummings would like to remove that existing building and construct something new. If you haven't been inside, the interior of the house has been subject to not only lack of maintenance, but water leaks, and there's exposed insulation, and the place is just a mess, really not worth saving. So the, the Cummings, of course, would like a modern home, and so they engaged Karen, went up with a design for one, and personally, I think she's done a great job of fitting this new home on this lot in a manner that really de-emphasizes the size of the building, does a good job. So I'd ask Karen if she would explain to the board members how she came to this design.
This is Karen Kempton, architect for Pam and John Cummings. Can you hear me?
Yes.
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 Okay. When I met with John and Pam last year, they expressed their wishes for a home in Chatham that they and their four children could enjoy, and as well as provide large outdoor space. Sarah, can you bring up the site plan? Requested various shaded areas outside, a screen porch, entertainment area, various covered porches. The privacy was on the south side of the lot, distant from the abutter. This was chosen as a lawn area, as there is also an existing vegetated buffer and a private dirt road that extends to a few more homes around the corner. Don and Pam wanted an unassuming Greek Revival front with the gable located, with the garage located at the rear, so not visible from the street. Makes the new driveway parallel with the neighbor's driveway, and the house became 35 feet from the property line, where 25 feet is required, and is now, the connector to the house and to the garage creates a privacy on the south side of the house for the play space. Can we go to the elevation?
Which elevation would you like, Karen?
The front one.
Okay.
There you go. The front facade has a covered porch, breaks the scale of the house, and is historically appropriate. The L to the right is a single-story for the master bedroom suite on the first floor. The bulk of the house is in its depth, which is hidden from the street, and only a portion of the first floor footprint is used for the second floor space, which has a modest three bedrooms and a bonus room over the garage. The single-story connector to the garage also breaks down the scale of the house. The footprint is similar in size to the existing footprint, and is only 88 square feet larger. A majority of the footprint we proposed is given over to outside covered porch areas, which is about 400 square feet, but these spaces are important to Pam and John to enjoy the outside while still in the shade and to create an attractive facade on these elevations. Excuse me. By keeping under the 10% allowed coverage and creating a conforming structure in the setbacks, we hope that you agree that this is an attractive addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'll go through the criteria.
Quickly.
Quickly. Adequacy in the size of the site in terms of the size of the proposed use, because the building coverage is less than 10%, and we meet all setbacks, and we think the size of the site is adequate. A compatibility of the size of the proposed structure with neighboring properties, when you, if you think of the two homes that framed the entrance to Harding's Lane, at Stage Harbor Road, I think you'll agree with me that this home is modest by comparison, and therefore compatible. Extent of proposed increase in non-conforming nature of the structure or use, we have, you know, because we meet all the dimensional requirements, the extent of the increase in non-conforming use is the increase in the living area on the property, and, you know, substantial changes of a non-conforming structure. Suitability of the site, including but not limited to impact on neighboring properties, et cetera. The lots level, there are no vegetate, there are no wetlands or water bodies close by, so we believe the site is suitable for the proposed construction. Impact of scale, siding, and mass on neighborhood visual character, including views, vistas, and streetscapes. The existing home has not been properly maintained and currently is a detriment to the neighborhood visual character. The applicant believes that the design by Karen of their new home will improve the neighborhood visual character and streetscape, and the scale and siding and the mass are appropriate for the neighborhood, surely not substantially more detrimental than the existing structure. Six, compatibility of the proposed use with neighboring uses. This is a residential neighborhood, and the proposed use is a single-family residence. Method of sewer disposal around the public sewer here, impact on traffic flow and safety, not anticipated to be any negative impact on traffic flow and safety. Noise and litter, believe the improvement with the use of the property, noise and litter after construction will not be a problem. And then adequacy of utilities, utilities and other public services are adequate for a single-family residence. That'd be our presentation.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Sarah, can you tell from looking at the call-ins, is there anybody that's here that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal?
It does not appear so, but we can ask the public, is there anyone that wishes to speak in, in favor of this application?
Seeing none. The only correspondence we have is from Giorgio, the health agent. It's dated the 27th of May, and it says, "I have reviewed the plans proposed for the new dwelling at this property. This will be connected to Town Sewer. The proposed four-bedroom dwelling meets the requirements of the Board of Health and the sewer regulations, and is acceptable to the Health Division." Is there anybody calling in that wishes to speak against this proposal or has a specific question?
Not legal now, but will be connected to Town Sewer. Town Sewer doesn't belong there yet.
Hearing none. Questions from the board. Mr. Upson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The question would be, when would the applicants be starting construction?
I don't know. I haven't had a chance to talk to the Cummings family about that. There's, I believe there's adequate room on the property for construction vehicles. It's not a particularly tight neighborhood, so I think they'd like to begin as soon as possible.
So, so we?
Somebody should mute the phone. Somebody's talking, and they ought to mute their phone.
Buck, go ahead.
Who can go ahead?
Mr. Upson, you.
Thank you. So normally, the board considers all construction activity to be limited between June 30th and Labor Day. Isn't that correct?
No, it's not correct. In tight neighborhoods, where they're worried about rentals and interfering with the people's summer vacations, I happen to represent the neighbor to the left as you look at the property, and they have no objections to the work commencing in the summertime. Well, I mean, it's up to the members of the board. I mean, you have to, you have to ask them, Buck.
Yep.
Yeah, well, we'll, we'll, we'll do that at the end. Mr. Thompson, any questions?
I have no questions for Mr. Riley.
Mr. Sullivan, please identify yourself.
Dennis Sullivan, no questions.
Happy Van Sickel.
Happy Van Sickel, no questions.
Mr. Veatch.
I got a, David Veatch, no questions.
Mr. Semple.
All Semple, no questions.
Mr. Nixon.
Nixon, no questions.
Nor do I, Bob Hessler. So we need a motion to close the hearing.
This is Paul Semple. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veatch seconds.
We'll call for a vote.
Nixon votes yes.
Mr. Semple.
Semple votes yes.
Mr. Veatch.
Veatch votes yes.
Happy. And I, Bob Hessler, vote yes. We will now go into deliberations. Let's start with Mr. Sullivan. And while you're deliberating, please offer an opinion about what Mr. Upson mentioned was, any restraints on construction during the summer?
Dennis Sullivan, I'm not voting, but if I were, I think it's a nice project, I would vote in favor of it. Not sure what that animal, dead animal, was on the side of the house, but it was kind of ugly looking. That's all I have.
What do you, do you, if this is approved, they can start sometime in July for construction. Do you have a problem with them doing construction in July?
No, no. Sullivan, no.
All right. Mr. Thompson.
Number one, I have no problem with having them start construction in July. I think it's an absolutely gorgeous house. It's a, a great addition to the neighborhood. If I was voting, I would definitely vote for it.
Right. Mr. Upson.
I agree with the previous two speakers. The proposal is definitely a significant improvement to the neighborhood. I do think that the seven or eight people on the end of Harding Lane and Elizabeth Way should have the same consideration as renters do, as opposed to the renters having more priority, and I think some consideration should be given to pushing the July start date to, we'll say, the end of August or after Labor Day.
All right. And you're Mr. Upson. I would just say, and commenting on your comment, is that they're all abutters, and they had the opportunity to appear and state that opinion, and we've heard nothing from anybody in the neighborhood. So that's all I'm going to say. Let's see. Mr. Nixon.
Well, I, I agree that this project is a great improvement. However, I feel very strongly that nothing should start until after Labor Day. That is a, you know, when you're starting a home of this nature, the demoli, demolishing it, cement mixers, and all that kind of stuff for the fore, for me, these folks have waited long enough, they can easily wait until after Labor Day before any construction begins. I agree with Mr. Upson that all of his relatives at the end of the street should be held in the same esteem as renters, and frankly, I see no reason why we shouldn't restrict this to beginning after Labor Day.
All right. Mr. Semple.
I agree that it's a substantial improvement to the neighborhood. I think all of the construction work can be done on-site, but I do agree that it's a fairly tight neighborhood, and it's a quiet one, and we probably should maintain that. So I would go along with the request that construction start after Labor Day.
Mr. Veatch.
Yeah, yes. I'm in agreement with, with all the previous with respect to the project, and I'm, I have the same feelings as Mr. Nixon and Mr. Semple and Mr. Upson with respect to delaying the start till after Labor Day.
And that was Mr. Veatch speaking. Happy.
Yes.
I agree. I think that that little lane is very private, it's tight down, as they call it that, and I think the way you're going to talk, September, October, would be the only fair thing to do, and so I would recommend that.
And that was Mrs. Van Sickel speaking. Bob Hessler, I'll go along with the consensus that we postponed it right after Labor Day. I think it's a spectacular design, and Karen, wonderful job, another wonderful job, and it really, it's a spectacular design. So if we are ready to vote, we will vote on the approval with the condition that construction not start until right after Labor Day.
So, sorry, this is Sarah, just so I can have this accurate in the decision letter, are you doing your typical seasonal conditions that between June 30th and Labor Day, no exterior construction will be allowed, no work shall be permitted on weekends, and no construction activity between 8:00 a.m., or construction activity between 8:00 a.m. and 5:00 p.m. only?
Well, I don't, I, I don't think we need that. I think we would say constru, go ahead, David.
Yeah, Fairless Leader, Sarah, I don't believe we would want to put that in. If we're limiting any construction to start until after Labor Day, I don't think we need all the rest of that wordage.
Okay. So how would you like the condition to read? No construction activity shall commence prior to Labor Day 2020?
Yeah, day after Labor Day 2020, yep.
I would say construction and destruction, because they're going to tear it down, so, and that's what the noise is going to be and all the?
Yep.
Flying debris and all that. So no destruction or construction, maybe get until Labor Day, and then no other condition.
Yep. I agree.
Can I just ask, do we, I mean, I'm just thinking, do we, we're also including our standard, all construction activity in vehicles to be contained on-site? Is that correct? Yes.
That is true.
Yeah, okay.
That's true. Okay. You ready?
This is Paul, this is Paul Semple. I'll move to approve the application with those conditions as submitted.
David Veatch seconds.
We will now vote. Mr. Nixon.
Yeah, I just, I think we, to be absolutely clear, Sarah, would you please read the conditions?
Okay. So I just looked up in my calendar, we, no construction activity or demolition shall be permitted until after September 7th, 2020, and condition two, all And condition two, all construction activity and vehicles shall be contained on site.
Good, perfect. And Nixon votes yes with those conditions.
Sample.
Sample votes yes.
Mr. Veatch.
Veatch votes yes.
Happy. And Bob Hessler votes yes. That's unanimous vote. Thank you, Mr. Riley. This is, we're going to call this Riley Day, by the way.
Well, let's turn, let's turn the next one down. We've been way too easy.
So next, we've got Woodcarver Knoll.
Yes.
Application number 20-020, Stephen and Mary Keating, care of William R. Frally Esquire, P.O. Box 707, Chatham, Mass. 02633. Owner of property located at 41 Woodcarver Knoll, also shown in the town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 11D Block 25, Lot B. The applicant seeks to install a 320-foot elevated catwalk across the salt marsh. The lot contains 1.29 acres in the R-40 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 9, and Section 8B to, 8D to B of the protective bylaw.
That's it? Phil Riley, on behalf of the Keating family, the, is, that elder who did the plan is here. Is Mark Burgess on the line, too? Okay, I guess not. Sad, you're present, all right?
I am here, yes, thank you.
All right, great. All right, so, Keating family are now year-round residents, and Steve Keating felt that, because the guy was being taxed with waterfront property, that he should be able to walk on his property down to the waterfront. It seems that, you know, there are other access ways to the water. The Keating property does not have rights in those ways, even though the neighbors say, oh, just go ahead and use it if you want. But they, it doesn't belong to them. They don't have a property right there. So they really want to have it on their own property. And the, so the area where the walkway is located, there's what we call a bordering vegetated wetland, which if you look on the site plan, they don't have yours in pretty colors like I do, Sarah. Anyway, the, so there's a line, you know, that line right there that goes across the property. So above that is the bordering vegetated wetland. Below that is the salt marsh. The, so above that line or in the salt marsh, 160 feet closer to the house is going to be permanent. And then the, the 160 feet below that line, out to the water's edge, that's seasonal and be removed each fall and replaced in the spring. The, Fat Eldridge did the plan. So if you have any questions regarding different areas shown in the plan, Fat can answer them. You do have a letter from the Conservation Commission. We had either two or three meetings with them, and they have issued an order of conditions that will allow the construction of the walkway. I can, I can read through the criteria, which is a slightly different section, but, you know, it really doesn't work for just a walkway. That would be our presentation unless you would like me to read the criteria.
Glad to make him read every word.
Is the chairman still there?
He is, he is.
He took a break.
No, I didn't.
Oh, all right.
Is there anybody in the audi, go ahead, Sarah.
Mr. Chairman, if the board is willing, as well as the applicant, they could submit the written criteria that I could make part of the record.
Okay, I'll do that.
That'd be perfect.
We need a vote on that from the board, I think.
All right. Nixon votes yes.
Sample.
Sample votes yes.
Veatch.
Veatch votes yes.
And Sickle. And so does Hessler. All right, Mr. Riley, you're done. Is there anybody in the audience or online or on the telephone that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Is, Sarah, for some reason, I, do I have correspondence on this?
So we, we do have correspondence from the Conservation Commission dated May 27th, 2020 from Conservation Agent Callie Harper. And in response to the Woodcarver Knoll application, she wrote, "The order of conditions was approved as special and general conditions."
Good.
Any mail from the neighborhood?
No. Is there anybody in the audience wishes to speak against this proposal or ask a specific question? Apparently not. So seeing none, questions from the board. Mr. Veatch.
I have no questions. David Veatch has no questions.
Happy Van Sickle.
Happy Van Sickle, no questions.
Mr. Sullivan.
Dennis Sullivan, no questions.
Mr. Thompson.
Dave Thompson has no questions.
Mr. Upson.
Mr. Upson, no questions.
Mr. Nixon.
Nixon, no.
Sample.
Mr. Sample does have one question, and that is, what happens to the 160 feet of seasonal walkway when it's removed? Where does it go?
The current, the current plan is to have that, the seasonal walkway, rest on the permanent walkway once it's removed.
So it just gets piled on top of the other one?
Yeah. I mean, by a coinkydink, it happens to be the same length. So they just bring the sections up and lay it. There's going to be a railing, they'll lean them against the railing so they can still walk. That's the plan.
I have no other questions.
All right. And I have no questions. So do we have a motion to close the hearing? Mr. Sample.
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veatch, second.
We need a vote. Mr. Nixon.
Nixon, yes.
Sample.
Sample, yes.
Veatch.
Veatch, yes.
Van Sickle.
Van Sickle, yes.
And Hessler, yes. So deliberations. We will start with Mr. Upson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the project is reasonable, seems to copy or clone similar designs in similar applications where property owners own to the water. And I'm familiar with some of the work that these people have done, are the engineers, and I'm thinking it'll be a good project.
That was Mr. Upson, by the way. Mr. Thompson, identify yourself and then comment.
My name's Dave Thompson. I'm in favor of this. Looks logical.
Mr. Sullivan.
Dennis Sullivan, yeah. It's okay with conservation, I guess it's okay with me. If I were voting, I would vote in favor of it.
Happy.
Yes, I agree. It's okay with conservation, I agree.
Mr. Veatch.
Yes, I'm, I'm in agreement with all previous.
Mr. Sample.
Yes, Paul Sample, I agree.
Mr. Nixon.
Nixon here. I think that Mr. Upson laid it out very carefully, and I agree.
And Bob Hessler, I agree. So are we ready to vote? No conditions. They can do anything they want on that property. I don't think it's going to interfere with the neighbors. So I think we can approve it as submitted. Mr. Sample.
I'll move to, this is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the application as submitted.
David Veatch, second.
All those in favor, Mr. Nixon.
Nixon, yes.
Sample.
Sample, yes.
Veatch.
Veatch, yes.
Happy Van Sickle.
Van Sickle, yes.
And Hessler, yes. It's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Riley. You can go home now.
Oh, thank you very much. I appreciate the board's time today. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Our final application of the day is application 20-021, Marx Family, Chatham Realty Trust, care of Kevin Marx. Owner of property located at 7 Perkins Drive, also shown on the town of Chatham's Assessor's Map, 2A Block 86, Lot PE4. The applicant seeks to enlarge, extend, or change a non-conforming dwelling on a non-conforming lot via the construction of additions and removal of an existing shed. The existing dwelling is non-conforming in that it is located 7.9 feet from the Easterly Butter. The proposed additions will be non-conforming in that they will be located 7.7 feet from the Easterly Butter where a 15-foot setback is required. The existing building coverage is 1,061 square feet, 12.05%. And the proposed building coverage is 1,313 square feet, 14.92%, where 15% is the maximum allowed. The lot is non-conforming in that it contains 8,800 square feet, where 20,000 square feet is required in the R-20 zoning district. A special permit is required under Mass. General Law, Chapter 48, Section 6, and Section 5B of the Chatham Protective Bylaw.
Mr. Marx, welcome to our meeting. It's, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you. Can you hear me clearly?
Yes.
Yes, Sarah, we're working with the iPhone and TV because the feed didn't come through today. So we'll try to get through this.
So just let me know which screen you, whether you'd like elevations, floor plan, or site plan to start, and we can go from there.
Does a mega difference. You can just kind of put them up as I'm talking, I guess. My name is Kevin Marx, and along with my wife Barbara, we own the property at 7 Perkins Drive in South Chatham. With me today is George Clark, who surveyed my property, and there's also a director butter across the street from me, and Steve Hart, who's the architect for the additions. I asked him to come along to answer any technical questions the board might have. We are requesting an approval for two small additions to both sides of our existing homes. These additions will greatly improve the quality of living space by upgrading the house from a converted summer cottage to a full-time home. The original home, plus the addition, will have a total building coverage of 14.92%. The current home is a 24-by-40-foot, three-bedroom ranch, one floor, built in 1950. The home also has the typical outside walk-down Cape Cod cellar, housing the heating water tank and our washer and dryer. When viewing the house from the front, we'd like to add an addition to both the left and right-hand side. The left-hand side would be 6 by 24.4, with a setback of 50 feet from the rear and 54 from the front. This addition would be used to extend our kitchen and small eating area. It will be built upon a slab with a crawl space. On the right-hand side, the addition would be 7 and 1/2 feet by 24.4, with a 15.3 setback from the neighbor's right-hand property line. This side of the addition would be used to put a updated bathroom and a closet to our bedroom. It will be set upon a foundation with a crawl space. When viewing this home from Perkins Drive, additions would have a balanced look due to the fact that each side would be similar in size. The view of the roofline would also be very similar. We're going to mimic the current roofline that is there. The size of our addition will not have a negative impact on our neighborhood. I believe the size of our house will still be on the smaller side when compared to surrounding homes. We will not be changing the slope of the surrounding house. Water runoff should be similar to the current conditions. The scale of these additions will not impact the neighbor's view or vistas. Currently, there is a 6 and 1/2-foot privacy fence running the entire length of the back of our property. And on the right-hand side, between the property, there are mature 30-feet-high Erevites providing a visual barrier between our home and our next-door neighbor on Perkins Drive. A town, excuse me, our home has town water and septic system that were both installed in 2003 to accommodate a three-bedroom home. The construction and remodeling should not impact the current traffic flow and safety. The front of the house is on Perkins Drive, which is a 20-foot right-of-way. Based on our builder, Andrew Henn Brothers, they are scheduled to begin after September. This date will not impact the quality and the enjoyment of a typical Chatham summer. As stated in the description, these additions come under the category of non-conforming, where the setback is 7.9 and 7.7. The proposed additions would have a similar impact. In summary, the remodeling of our home will afford us the opportunity to move our washer and dryer from the Cape Cod cellar to the first floor so that we'll no longer have to battle the elements to do our laundry. Additions will also transform our converted summer cottage to a comfortable year-round home. We have lived in Chatham full-time for three years and summoned for 14 years. Believe me when I say, we love Chatham, we love our neighbors, we love our location. I'd love to say that we love our house, and I probably will say that after the additions are approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marx. If you ever want a job making presentations, let us know. Very well done. Is there anybody online or watching on TV land that wishes to speak in favor of this proposal? Hearing none, I will read the correspondence. And there's actually a fair amount of it. This is an email to Sarah Clark dated May 27th. It is from Joe and Patty McLaughlin, who live at 27 Seamus Lane, South Chatham. It says, "Barbara and Kevin Marx have been on the corner of Long's Lane and Perkins Drive for 17 years. They took a rundown house and turned it into a well-cared-for home. Kevin is a meticulous gardener that draws neighbors to his yard to stop, admire, and chat. They are kind, generous, helpful neighbors, friends, that are a credit to the Chatham community. Joe and I give approval to their project." This is a letter from Joe, the Giorgio Health Agent, dated the 26th of May. It said, "I have reviewed the plan to add an addition to the house at this property. The proposed plan will not add septic flow, nor will it encroach on the existing septic system. I have no concerns about the proposal." This is an email to Sarah Clark from Randa and Kevin Carr, 58 Long's Lane. It is dated May 25th as an email. Sarah, this note is to make you aware of our approval of application 2021, Marx Family, Chatham Realty Trust, care of Kevin Marx, located at 7 Perkins Drive, to change a non-conforming dwelling. We've also sent by mail a copy of this to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is a letter, let's see, who's this from? Dated May 16th. It is from George and Patricia Clark. It says, "We are writing in support of the remodeling and slight expansion of our neighbor's home at 7 Perkins Drive, South Chatham. Barbara and Kevin Marx are remarkable people who have taken this old, dark, neglected cottage and turned it into a beautiful welcoming home. We live at 7 Seashell Drive and share Perkins Drive from our side yard. As we sit on our deck, we look across Perkins Drive and enjoy the view and beautiful landscaping efforts of our neighbors. The Marxes are both retired professionals, always willing to lend a hand, share the feuds of their community gardens, support the town of Chatham if needed. Now as years, now as year-round residents, they need their house updated and a small expansion. It will enable them to live safe and secure in their Chatham home for many years. Please consider our support when making the decision on this application." And again, that's George and Patricia Clark. Bear with me one second. This is a letter from Howard and Joanne Lowry, 6th East Road. It's dated May 18th. It's to the Zoning Board of Appeals. This is to advise you that we support the approval of application 20021, Marx Family Trust. As the abutters, we are in full agreement that the special permit should be granted- be granted to allow the proposed renovations to this existing property. We have been neighbors to the Marxes for several years and could state unequivocally that they have always maintained their property and taken great pride in improving the appearance of the neighborhood. In addition, they have taken the initiative to preserve the safety of the area by having the road safety department in Chatham install seasonal stop signs at the intersection, abutting their property to slow down the flow of traffic during summer months. As grandparents, we sincerely appreciate their efforts to protect our little ones against the constant speeding of delivery trucks and other seasonal cars, cars. Finally, we would be remiss if we didn't mention how lovely they maintain the grounds of their home. The gardens and lawns are always meticulous and beautifully kept. They are wonderful neighbors and deserve the full support of all of us lucky to live near them." This is a letter from, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Kevin McKinley, uh, 6 Salt Spray Lane. Dear Board Members, this letter is regarding the property at 7 Perkins Lane. Um, by Kevin and Barbara Marx, our property is, I think it says it, it, we're Butters. The Marxes have been excellent neighbors of nearly 20 years. They improved and beautified their property throughout those years. They're, they've changed the addition plans, which, anyway, I, I can't read their handwriting, but they approve it. Um, and this is from Jay Briggs. Uh, Sarah, I spoke with a woman who wished to provide this letter of support to the ZBA, and she says, thanks so much, this is to Jay Biggs. And it's from Laura Decovi and Waxman, saying, um, "Thanks so much for your help on the phone today. As I mentioned, we own the property at 19 Perkins Drive, which is adjacent to 7 Perkins Drive. Our right to indicate our full support of the application pending for 7 Perkins Drive that would enlarge the existing dwelling. Please convey our support to Chairman Hessler and the Board of Appeals when it considers Application Number 20021 at the May 28th hearing. Sincerely, Laura Waxman." That's the extent of the correspondence. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak against the proposal or has a specific question? Hearing none? Questions from the board? Um, Mr. Nixon?
I have none. Nixon has none.
Uh, Mr. Sample?
Uh, I have no questions. The only comment I would make is you obviously have to have the name Kevin in order to live in this area. But, uh, other than that, I, I have no questions.
That was Paul Sample, by the way. Mr. Veatch?
Uh, David Veatch, I have no questions.
Uh, Happy Van Sickel. Uh, Mr. Sullivan?
Uh, Dennis Sullivan, no questions.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, this is Dave Thompson. I have no questions. I'm just going to identify myself as the guy who was driving the black truck. Talk to you later.
Mr. Upson?
This is Buck. No mysteries here, no questions.
And Bob Hessler, um, no questions. May I have a motion to close the hearing? Mr. Sample?
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to close the hearing and move into deliberations.
David Veatch, second.
Uh, Happy for a vote. Uh, Mr. Veatch?
Veatch votes yes.
Sample?
Sample votes yes.
Nixon?
Nixon votes yes.
And so does Hessler. Uh, deliberations. Um, Mr. Sullivan?
Um, Dennis Sullivan, after hearing from all the neighbors, I wouldn't dare vote against it. Nice project.
Mr. Thompson?
Uh, Dave Thompson, uh, a really nice, uh, project, and I wish them well.
Um, Mr. Upson?
This is Buck. Um, two comments. One is, um, the multiple letters of support were very, uh, encouraging and more, even, even more appreciative of the original wording of many of the letters, unlike sometimes what appears to be form letters. So, I support it.
Good. Uh, Mr. Nixon?
Yes, Nixon here. Uh, number one, I, I actually observed, uh, Mr. Thompson, and he was driving a white truck, that he's now turning into a black truck. That probably was his second visit there for a different reason. Uh, I have to tell you that Mrs. Marx couldn't have been a nicer lady. She was willing to talk to Mr. Thompson, and I happened to be there at the same time. And her neighbors are so enamored with her, they had just dropped off three, count them three cakes for her, not for Mr. Thompson and I. So, they are beloved in this neighborhood, and they should run for mayor, whatever they have down there. I would certainly vote this.
Mr. Sample?
Yes, it clearly is not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood and supported by the neighborhood strongly, so I will vote in favor.
Mr. Veatch?
Yes, uh, I agree with all previous. Very nice-looking projects, very modest, and, and, uh, fits right into the neighborhood, and, uh, strongly support it.
And this is Bob Hessler. Um, I fully support it. Oh, Happy didn't. It's Happy's turn. She's sitting right in front of me. And this is Bob Hessler. I fully support it. It's a great project. And, um, I'm very sincere, uh, Mr. Marx, you did a great job on your presentation. Um, it's indicative of the way you keep your house. So, um, we're ready to vote. As you indicated, you're not going to start till, um, after Labor Day, so I don't really see any restrictions other than our normal one, which is all parking, uh, vehicles, all vehicles involve the construction. Be parked off-site, off the road and on-site or someplace.
All construction-related vehicles and materials will be maintained on-site?
That might be very difficult considering the lot, but...
It, it is a very small lot, um...
Yeah. I think I understood. I'm sorry, Sarah. Go ahead.
Um, I was gonna, gonna say that oftentimes, um, especially if it is a summertime neighborhood, um, there are individual agreements that are made between homeowners to allow, you know, framing trucks to park on a neighbor's lot. So, if we implore that condition, it may be restrictive to those vehicles being able to come down. Otherwise, they're all going to have to carpool to get to the site.
I think we ought to give Mr. Marx the benefit of the doubt and let him work it out with his neighbors.
I, I would agree with that.
With that kind of support, um, of, of the letters, I don't think we should be presumptuous to tell him what to do.
Okay, I agree.
So, I, I just think we need to, um, since he's already said they're not going to start till, well, after Labor Day, I think we ought to just go with, um, as submitted.
Good.
David Veatch, say, just, just saying because, and Sarah said this, but I, I think that our, you know, generally our standard, all vehicles on, on, kept on the side, I hope, I'm hoping that doesn't preclude arrangements with neighbors. I, uh, and I think that's, we try to encourage that.
Yeah, that's what I said. We'll let Mr. Marx work it out with his neighbors.
Yeah.
But we're not going to tell him that he has to.
Agreed.
All right. So, Mr. Sample, we need a motion.
Uh, I will move, this is Paul Sample. I will move to, uh, approve the application as submitted, uh, with the condition that construction or, uh, activity on the site begin after, uh, Labor Day.
David Veatch, second.
Of all those in favor, Mr. Nixon?
Uh, Nixon, yes.
Sample?
Sample, yes.
Veatch?
Veatch, yes.
Happy Van Sickel. And Bob Hessler, yes. Uh, it's approved unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Marx.
Thank you so much. And, uh, one of my neighbors came over and just told me there's three parking spaces available across the street.
Great. Hey, we... Uh, now we have to approve minutes. Any comments with changes to the minutes from the last meeting?
So, they are the minutes of April 23rd, 2020.
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to approve the minutes as, uh, published.
David Veatch, second.
Of all those in favor, Mr. Nixon?
Uh, I will be voting because I did not attend the meeting.
You weren't here. Uh, who was, uh, Sample? Mr. Sample?
Uh, yes, I vote yes.
So, the voter will be Buck Upson.
I know.
Mr. Veatch?
Veatch votes yes.
Happy? Mr. Upson?
Upson votes yes.
And so does Hessler. So, that is our meeting. Um, any comments for the good and welfare of the Town of Chatham and our viewers? If not, hopefully, next time we meet, we'll do it in real, live, personal, but we'll wait and see what Sarah tells us to do.
Um, we do need a motion to adjourn and a roll-call vote to end the meeting, please.
We need a roll-call vote to adjourn. Mr. Sample?
This is Paul Sample. I'll move to adjourn.
David Veatch, second.
And we need a roll-call vote. Mr. Nixon?
Nixon, yes.
Sample?
Sample, yes.
Veatch?
Veatch, yes.
Van Sickel? And Hessler, yes. Thank you, everybody.